There we go. Looks like we have six P M. On the dot. Um, so let's go ahead and start this work session. Uh, item A, chapter one sixteen, alcoholic beverages ordinance. We have a hundred over a hundred sixteen chapters. Do you know we had that many, Chuck?
Yes.
And so Neil is going to be our next.
There's also a copy of um, operating agreement for pops in here too. We should take a look at that.
And.
Hello.
And I know Linda had given me a couple. So on the very first page, we took off. The up at the top, we took off the on sale.
Yeah.
It said off sale. So I did that.
It's on sale.
But we took that off. Yeah. So we just made it just off sale and then I fixed that paragraph D. I was just kind of shifting over.
Okay, good.
And then. Yeah, this is the one I. Was there another one? You're telling me you have enough?
Well, well, we were talking about the financial page.
Yeah, that's. So I didn't do anything with that because I wasn't really sure how you wanted to worry about that.
Yeah. Well. With that, I mean, if he signs this, he's on the hook for forty two hundred bucks.
Three.
Fifty a month. So. The board already voted to. Give him a break using the big calculation uh dollar per operating hour for the license. So. Um. We can't put that in here because we have to do what's in the ordinances, right? But. Like we were saying before, if we put agrees to pay the sum as delineated by the ordinance or something to that effect, then. The ordinance can change and then uh. Then he he can pay the other one.
Because I got his license. So we just need to get this light and then it'll be good to go.
What's that?
I got his license on yesterday. So once we get this word around, I can have him have go sign it and can sign it.
Yep.
And.
I mean, you guys, what do you guys think about that?
Well, that's what we agreed to.
I know, but I mean, as far as the mechanically speaking in the operating agreement. It doesn't really have the sum in there. It only refers to the ordinance.
Mm hmm.
And then we're gonna end up changing that amount on the back end when we update the ordinances.
Right.
So I mean, as far as a contract goes, is that a little squirrely or what? What do you guys think? I mean, we're probably gonna have to do something like that anyways, but.
Well. I I think that, you know. For this time, I think we're okay. I'm not saying that it it's what we should do for a permanent. Um, but I think we need to to look at the issue again come December, you know, for starting over in January. But that is what what was agreed upon. So.
There you go. Just going over your uh, seem to be your operating agreement, I suppose.
And and I, if I'm, if you said and I missed it, I'm sorry, but did Kent look it over and?
I sent it to him last Thursday. I never got it back from him.
Haven't hit back for me.
Okay, yeah.
Does this have uh the renegotiation? Does this have a renegotiation clause in it?
What was the agreement? Can I add?
Uh. Didn't we agree to a percentage? What was the percentage? Was per hour opened or something?
Percentage, it's a. A dollar per operating hour calculation for the monthly fee.
Right.
But that's gonna take uh some time to in institute. So initially, it's gonna be the three fifty like what you said.
Kind of like for a month or whatever, could you get it to take you on sixty days to, you know?
Right.
As fast as we can do it, you know?
But do we have that figure yet?
Well, let's see.
Is it in this agreement?
They can't, I think you can't really put it in this until we have the.
It's on.
The public caper case.
Right.
We can't put the number in there. We can refer to the ordinances. And then when the ordinances get updated, if the responsibility for the monthly payment then gets updated too.
Is there any kind of clause that you hear to talk about updating the operating agreement at times?
Do you wanna up? You wanna just do it that way instead?
Month instead of months.
That's what I was asking. Is there any renegotiation clause? You know, like it's got thirty ninety days notice for cancellation. But I don't see anything from what I found about both parties being able to mutually mutually negotiate and alter.
I thought that it was just.
Amendment or.
We kind of had it figured out what it was gonna be from now till January and we were gonna look at it again. For the next year's full license rather than, because this one is only. Four months, five months.
But if I sign it and bid the first month for three fifty.
Right.
My concern is is if there's nothing in here saying that we could.
Right.
Legally, I could be held responsible for the next six months even though you've been.
Yep.
People believe they're done in three months.
Well, it says on the bottom of one sixteen point nine nine that. No operating agreement may be modified or changed unless such request that's submitted and ready to the town board. Set request that had been approved by the town board of processes. With all the full changes, it will be recorded and signed by the operating board of processes. So all I got here is putting my writing. If you request, even though you sign it, you'll still be on the board.
Where was that at, Dan?
On page fifteen of the. Of the one sixteen, yeah, so second.
Okay, this one. Okay, gotcha.
We always have that.
Yeah.
I mean, the other thing is we can just make the agreement valid for sixty days and then we sign another one. Once we have other stuff in place. Then we can have the numbers in the agreement.
You could understand my concerns a lot.
Well, yeah.
We talked in the comments and we all agree on something, but it's not legally spelled out and. That's what I'm just.
Yeah, I mean, any contract at the time should always have. If there's any consideration from renegotiation, it needs to be in the contract. Or not. All right, so part of thirty was the day of December, operator ninety days notice.
Oh, you want to just put a reference to one sixteen point oh nine B and section fourteen of the contract?
I think that would work.
So the. After one fifteen of these pound ordinance numbers or your state statute.
Those ones are the town.
Okay.
I don't know. We can just add on the the page where it references the money. Get back to that. License and fees, page six of.
The operating.
The operating agreement. Um. We could just. Put in there that um. As of whatever. See, it would be October first. As of October first, it's just the one dollar per.
Yeah.
And have it done then for this year.
But I think the point, I think the problem is is that we're down charts. It's in the ordinances. We still have that in.
My understanding was your plan was to amend that on this to say.
Right.
Fee schedule of the operating.
Yeah, but we're talking about the agreement that you're gonna sign soon so you can get operating.
Right.
And so.
You can't put that number in there while the ordinance still says whatever.
I don't believe so.
Okay.
I mean, and that's why the.
Why you did the amendment of the procreating year or whatever. To the next meeting, yeah.
Okay, so then just add the.
So I think that we have a couple of options here. We either have the operating agreement sunset after sixty days. And then he reapplies or we do a new operating agreement after the ordinances are changed. Or we just put the language in here that says basically as per the ordinance. And instead of listing the amount, because right now the amount that's listed in the operating agreement, it looks listed in the ordinance.
Mm hmm.
Could you just put a line in there to be the state something to the effect of. Fees to be renegotiated uh within sixty days after the ordinance has been amended.
All right. So if ten licenses of fees, if all that does is ref- reference the ordinances, right? All it really does, you take out all those numbers and reference the ordinances. And per the ordinances, then once a change goes live in the ordinances, it applies.
It's automatically.
Automatically applied. So there's a lot in here that you could just remove and. Then when when the ordinance goes live, it just clicks down to whatever it's gonna be. And then just. And then it looks like the contract that's just very generic and can be used again and again and again and again. But I did. So another thing on this five percent we could get into in the ordinance, but um. It was brought to my attention that we may not actually have the authority to charge that. So that needs to be looked into. It reads. The percentage is is. Quite few of them. Does it read slightly packs? We're pretty strictly controlled on what tax we can apply, so. I mean, maybe that's a uh. D O R question.
Okay, well, let's do one thing at a time. Um. So how do you, how do y'all think we should uh proceed on this one?
Well, the easiest way is to just assign it for this contract for two months, isn't it? Just and. And then redo the other one. Redo it when redo the fee schedule.
I wouldn't have.
And then the ordinance.
I wouldn't have read five of the full license, just redo it.
Just redo the operating agreement. Yes.
I mean, we're right.
Right.
Yeah, all in order to follow up in sixty days with renewal of the new new operating agreement. Here, you have a.
Last email I got from Laura is that she's had several people from her most of calling her with all their ideas and how they interpret stuff and that. They would not give us any advice. Oh, no legal advice and then, yeah, just it said it all falls on your operating agreement. However, that's. However, that reads is kind of what she told me, so.
No, no, I I'm sorry. As far as the license itself.
I have the license.
It's here. Got that light yesterday.
I did not know. That's what I was asking.
No, I'm sorry. Yeah, no. No, we got the light yesterday. So I wanted. So I was hoping we could get the operating agreement so I could give them both to you. Get to go. Yeah.
Okay. Not on our own sake, Dave. Sorry.
Yep, no worries.
Yeah, I mean, can you just?
Can you just?
I'd be okay with if we just did said something to the fact this is in agreement for sixty days to.
Just change that.
And and a new agreement shall be reached on on or before October first.
Right, yeah.
Just don't know how that will affect you in the corner pantry or in your off sale with that. Until you've changed your operating agreement and what your ordinance is. Didn't go by it, just any note written, submit it as it says in the ordinance at that time, it's legal. And then you roll through and then you do your changes and nobody can say that you're premeditated in what you're doing.
Right. And there already was on that amendment, so it's right fine.
Yeah, we can just do that. Just. Just. I mean, we got the bulk of the changes done right there.
Yeah.
Got all the view machine out.
Yeah. I go down.
Heading into on sales.
I can finish. I can print a clean copy and.
Yeah.
We could get it printed. We could get it signed.
As long as the board follows through with the action that they said they were already gonna take. When you submit your request for amendment of the operating agreement, then.
But if we agree to a sixty day operating agreement, then I'll.
Yeah, I mean, we could do that too, I think. I mean, um.
Did you guys consider operating it during this? Has it been sixty days you haven't been able to amend the ordinance or making of those changes that you think you might be able to do? With the big schedule or whatever. The time at that time, it just. We either renew another operating agreement or we talk to the. Really not, that that shouldn't be a premeditated type of things.
Does anybody see a reason not to do it that way to where you just don't put any fees in here and just reference the ordinances? Any good reason not to do it that way?
I mean.
It's a change. It is the change that the other licenses. Have not been informed of. So I don't know that that makes it fair. When you, you know, that when we do this. They will all, they will all come in to re-up their licenses in November or December. And at that time, if everybody got the same paperwork, it would just look better.
Well, then that that would be the time to do it then, right?
Well, we gotta have it done before that.
That would be the time to make their operating agreement match.
Yes.
Everybody else's operating agreement.
Yes, that's when it needs to be done.
Yeah, and the other. Change we're making isn't a substantive change. Because we're not changing. What the effect of that is. Because that's just referring back to the ordinance.
Mm hmm.
If we were to do that. So then if they. Corner pantry or I think they're the only other off sale holder.
Right now.
They come in and they want to get their operating agreement and then theirs reads the same as presumably this one would if we adopted that change. Then nothing would substantively change with them either. It would just read a little bit differently. But then uh. I guess the only difference with the amount that they would pay would be the same as long as we have the same numbers in the fee schedule.
Mm hmm.
Uh, but the only difference is is it's not in the ordinance. It's in the fee schedule. That's what we're beginning at doing.
Mm hmm.
The only, I guess, maybe I'll say this, but my only concern is like we go through the sixty day. Then at that point, if nothing has been changed, then I would have to give another ninety days. And that is a whole things all that. But that's why I was hoping that we, you know. State something about that to listen.
Well, if it's only effective sixty days, then after sixty days, that would be it.
Correct. That's what I'm asking.
Okay.
That that's what I'm saying is is if it didn't say that. Then in sixty days, if it didn't say that, at that time, if nothing went on, then I, you know.
Yeah, well, then we, I guess you'd have to sign a new agreement then.
If we didn't stay sixty days off this agreement, yeah.
But if you approve it as it is right now, it will continue to run unless you come in with writing, just like the ordinance says, that you. Amendment to the agreement. You're signing an agreement that's gonna be in effect until that is set. So whether it goes by sixty days or ninety days. You come in with your written agreement, you go, otherwise you continue to pay as what you pay. Hopefully, it'll have anything done within sixty days.
Mm hmm.
But otherwise, you're still gonna have to amend all the ordinance, make it clean. And write it in there exactly what you you want to express with your amendment. That's what it says in the ordinance.
I think everything else goes events.
I mean, if we if we do it after sixty days, then. You have to get a new operating agreement after sixty days. Therefore, you won't be able to operate in the window that the agreement is ended and the new agreement's picked up.
Well, I mean, if we have some temporary.
I don't know if there is a temporary one, but the that I think that's the point Dan was trying to make that sixty days is a hard sixty days and after that it's over. And if it falls in the middle of where we don't have a meeting and something like that, or the, you know, for some reason the work good to be. Then you basically kind of be stuck. Without an operating agreement. But if we if we did it to where either right now it's in effect or we just edit it to be as per the ordinances. Uh. You know, then I mean, either. In either scenario, it's gonna be on us to to do something. The sixty day one, I don't know if you want to be have that automatic sunset clause in there. You know what I mean? I I mean, that's kind of.
I understand what you're saying. The only concern is I just don't want to get put up, man.
Right.
That's. So we got from operator agrees to pay the from some all the way down before the parentheses, we can delete all that, put associated operator fees as prescribed or referenced in the ordinances and. It's on. I mean, it's. There's nothing saying that.
It's it's not that I don't trust any. It it's just I don't want to block myself into a corner, you know?
To get that. That have to come back again. This is the one and done solution.
Yeah, it is. I mean. There, yeah, there's, that is a one and done solution. I think that, in my opinion, that'd be a good solution.
Does it take a burden off him to ever have to have to think about this again until his like and then it becomes an annual? Well.
Annual license.
Yeah, it becomes an annual license and he doesn't have, whatever we do is.
Could could you repeat that again? You were.
So if we do that change, then you don't have to worry about it again. We can just. You can only have to be here now, deal with this right now, get this one done and then. It would, whatever changes made in the ordinance would just apply to this.
So it's page six.
Yeah. Where you said.
Number ten, license fees.
Yeah.
Yep.
As private reference, right? Because if we're gonna go. Right now, as prescribed, the fees are prescribed in the ordinance or referenced, then it would carry on to whether the ordinances are prescribing the fee or referencing the fee schedule.
Yeah, that and that's why um, that's why I brought that up at the beginning.
Yeah.
Because we're looking at moving all the numbers in the ordinances to a fee schedule. So then it would just hop skip and go.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, just fall down the ladder, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I mean. I'm okay with doing it that way. If you guys want to.
I'm okay with that, too. I'll be all right with that.
Okay. You okay, Donna?
And we'll just have to make sure when everybody else comes in, right, that there's there are no agreement.
It has the same wording. Yeah, then.
It'll just be the new default agreement for office. I mean, this one could be. We just take pops in the address.
Associated operator fees as prescribed or referenced in the ordinance. And that deletes everything from some all the way down to just just before the parentheses, uh, e-copies of invoices from them.
Yeah. Good.
And then at that point with that in, whether you do it for sixty days, ninety days or a full year.
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter anymore.
Doesn't matter for us.
Doesn't matter for, well, it doesn't matter for us and it doesn't matter for him having to come back. He knows he doesn't have to.
But. Okay.
You know what I'm saying? Like.
Yeah, but he could, at that point too, if if we don't get it lowered, then he has the choice to not not pay the fee and not. You know, not keep the license, not renew it, right? So.
Okay.
See what I'm saying? I mean, he he does not want the license if he is gonna have to pay what the schedule says now for the full year. Okay?
Well, the one question I have, does the state, when the state issues a license, is there a term to capture that issuance?
Yeah, it's for the year.
So that one, so this would set it up. That makes no sense for this one to expire at the same time as the liquor license.
It already does.
It does. Yeah.
Okay, all right. Sounds good.
Okay, it's it's just the price that he is concerned about, you know? And and having a legal license and. Getting the price down to what we all feel is accurate for an off sale license that is not. Has limited hours. I guess he's probably had said that. So.
And then you'll update them dates on page twelve on D. And thousand fifteen, sixteen.
You're looking at the other one?
Oh, those, yeah, you're, we're in the ordinance now? Yeah, that just needs to be deleted. Item D, that's that's bad, bad, bad business all across the board. That's not good.
Yeah.
Sure. And then uh, whatever ones that you needed to do on the.
Yeah, I got those done.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's cool. Use all sorts of. Yeah, it's cool, use all sorts of. Right, because all that is, at the end of the day, is either applied during that time period, and if that time period is passed, then it applies to A, so D can just be deleted. It's a special case. Some kind of. Now, with this ordinance, are we looking to just focus on, like, we're just looking to do a, a section amendment, not an ordinance amendment, right? So we're just looking to. Do like one sixteen oh four, not, I don't, I don't know if there was anything else in this ordinance that we can look at right now? And anybody else?
As far as I know, that's what we're gonna do.
Takes out a whole fee. Put it somewhere else. Is that referencing the ordinance? Uh, seven AM to midnight?
Yes, one sixteen of seven.
One sixteen oh seven?
Yeah. Which is, um. The state rules are seven AM, two AM.
That was changed, so the ordinance didn't get changed to follow that one? Yeah, state changed that. Yep, we should update that, yep.
Well, I mean, in that case, right, so that's already a situation where there's something the ordinance, the chain, the state changed it, and now the ordinances. Should we just not have that? Be anything other than a reference to the statute.
Statutes?
I mean, if we're, we're down to follow that and we don't.
Right.
Have the ability to override or supersede it.
Right, we can be more strict, but not less strict. Right? And it's better off to just go with what they say, you know, if we have crazy use enough.
Yep. My feelings is if we're doing something with the ordinance, we might as well do the whole ordinance and get it done.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if you gotta change it, you might as well do it, so. But the first thing was to make sure the fill was taken care of, which I think we've got that one handled now, so, sort of, yeah.
Just out of curiosity, how soon are we?
That would be at the next board meeting and then.
So we have meeting the fifth, first reading, second reading the nineteenth, right? And then it's twenty days effective after the second reading.
That, that.
Or the ordinance.
The ordinance.
Does that have to go through the board? Didn't, didn't we?
I would think Tuesday, Tuesday night. We could sign it and you could be in operations on Wednesday morning if you like.
I guess what I actually get at is.
Cause I think motion we made on.
Not necessarily sound anything, but put it out of the line, I have sent them a copy of the license.
Five nineteen. You can get that.
Seven.
Tonight.
Seven. Looking.
That wasn't the best regular meeting, right?
Yeah.
Actually, last meeting, you said you would approve the agreement.
Linda and, Linda and, um, yeah, the attorney we're gonna look at. Yeah, and I, I went through it.
So as long as you approve it, then we have to let it sign.
Right.
That's, that's kind of, I think, why we did that.
So then technically I would be legal tomorrow, so instead of making phone calls and getting things.
So it looks like.
That is true, yep.
If we do first reading. Fifth, second reading nineteenth, and it passes. It would go live on the eighth of September.
Yeah, but.
Yeah.
But it's not necessary. Until, I mean, we have to have it done by the first of October.
Right.
For a fill. So we could give ourselves an extra week there and seeing how we are, in my opinion, seeing how we should redo the, and make sure the entire ordinance is correct. You know, that would give us a little more time to make sure that that is correct. So. But yeah, the soonest it could be was, would be that eighth of, eighth is a Tuesday?
Um, it would go live, the, it was on Monday, it would go live.
Oh, the ninth is our meeting, okay.
Yeah.
So.
That would be the, the.
Eighth, it would go, yes, we do first and second, and we're all good, every, then it would go live on the eighth. September.
And it could actually wait till the twenty third if we needed it to.
Right, so if we bumped it by, by one set of meetings, then right, it would be the twenty second, right, because everything just moves down to.
Down, yeah.
Yeah, I think about like piece me when you were to miss is that, the, the. The proposed being contemplated is the cost of publishing. I think this probably be a hundred thirty, one forty bucks, something like that, for that one page.
I mean, characters are considered.
Well, right, cause like.
Well, I mean, if we don't change. Page one or whatever, however you want to look at it there, then that doesn't. Count, you just have to.
Right.
What's changed?
I think the lowest we, the lowest hierarchy we can order is a section, right? So we can second one, that can be an individual.
Right.
And.
See, this, this, so in the definite, if you're looking at the, the ordinance now. Um, definitions, um, bar, distilled, full service restaurant, malt beverage, nonprofit organization. Off sale, on sale, well, there isn't anything here for a grocery store.
Right, I don't think we can do, we, I don't think we can delineate that. I think this is all downstream from statute.
It's the type of license you should, you can get.
Right.
It's not a grocery store license.
Even, even in the state does not have one, right? Well, that's stupid.
That's where all this comes from.
Well, that is.
They really pretty much do just say, do whatever you want.
Yeah, well, to me, that's, if they've got it separated this much, they should have it separated into, like I said, a grocery store, I think. But that's.
But they don't.
They don't, so, okay.
Yeah, so it says motion by Kramer, seconded by Harris to conditionally approve the after the agreement. Until the board vice president and county attorney near review edits, but I think this. Think it's opposite of that, because it's, it's not conditionally approved. Until the edits are reviewed, it's not approved until after the edits are reviewed and then it's signed. So it's a little bit.
Twenty five, what you?
Different there. So we're down in old business.
Conditionally approve the operating agreement for pops grocery shop.
Yeah, it's kind of backwards, you know, what we're saying in the meeting.
That is weird.
We can fix that.
That minute's going to be, good thing we haven't voted to approve these minutes yet, because that's not right.
Yeah. Yeah, so this, this is kind of like, you know, obviously what we wanted to do, but, you know, it's just the wording. But yeah, so the, the idea was that. We could get the operating agreement done and then we could sign it. If Linda reviews it. And.
Yeah, that's.
We can't review it, and then after that, I can sign it, and Terry can sign it, and then Phil can start calling its vendors.
So where, what are we waiting on then? Will we?
No, we need the attorney to look at it.
Oh, hey.
Yeah, well. We can email it to him. And navigate his data.
I emailed it from last Thursday.
Yeah, well, now we have a updated one we can send him. And, uh.
It says review, not the. Approval, so.
Right. Well, they don't, I mean, they don't get. So, um. I mean, I think that. That's what we're waiting for on this one, and we send it, can't get his review, make sure that it's fine. Again, or whatever, that he. It makes sense to him anyways, what we did there. And then go ahead and sign it. Then we're done with that, right?
You don't need the operating agreement for the, with your company. You only need the license, so you can go ahead and start, you can go ahead and start with your. Whatever you need to do with him, with them, and.
They just need to see proof of places.
Yeah, and we got that, so we'll give you a copy, you can get him a copy tonight.
When do we think Mr. Heyer will have time to review it?
We'll push that. We'll push it, we want it done by the next meeting, at least, so.
Yeah, I mean, but if he, he can look at it, be emailed and just.
Right.
Approve the, or just review the.
Agree with it?
Make sure that it. Makes sense to him, then I can sign it anytime after that.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, like, if you send it to him tomorrow, by tomorrow night, he says he have to look free. Then there may be a sign out for the.
I'm okay with that, or you need, does that make sense to you guys?
That's kind of how we had it, yeah.
That, that's how I.
Yep.
Alrighty, hope we're good. So, um.
Pretty good.
This is, this is the old one.
Uh, it's a little skinnier.
You know, the other thing you can do, too, is have Neil, uh, look at the, uh. Look at the.
Sorry.
What do you guys think about that, asking Neil to look at this?
I think that's money that we don't need to spend. Um.
He has an on-call budget.
Well, I know, but. Every time we call him, it takes away from that on-call budget. And I think that if the attorney says it looks legal and we're okay with it, and the state's obviously okay with it, I, I don't think we need to spend the money. I think there'd be. More importantly, let's just save that money for him.
So you, you might have to look at the ordinances instead of Neil?
Oh, I'm sorry, no, Neil's fine, sorry. I thought you meant this particular. Operating agreement, that's what I thought you meant. Sorry, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, the other one thing is, uh. If, uh, I know she's probably getting a picture hearing from us, but the D O R. About whether or not we're allowed to tack on percentages as a fee.
That's a different question.
Okay.
And if the percentages doesn't work, what would work? Then in change, that has been done forever in this town, not, not saying that it's right, but what I'm telling you is that it has been done forever. And that is a considerable amount of our income. Um, for the year, and. And so does it need to be worded differently, or how do we, how do we?
And I generally send them a copy of our operating agreement after the sign was.
So they know it. Right.
They've never.
Right.
And I don't think.
Cause there's the one percent. There's a statute that gives us, we can, the one percent.
Which we do, right?
Is that in, is that in this packet here? This one? No.
You're talking sales tax rate?
Yeah, um. The one, the B and B is collected by the state.
Yeah.
Yeah, on like the sales tax, yes.
Just something else dropped my attention.
Well, that, that is just. How we felt it was fair, so that every business was charged the same. By doing the five percent of purchases by. The establishment.
Right.
Then everybody is paying the same exact fee, five percent of what they're buying. There's nothing to do technically with their sales, if they want to pour a double shot rather than a single shot, that's up to them, but it, it's. And.
All right, well, that's something we're gonna have to look at later anyway, so.
Yeah, no, the question was that it reads, it reads like a tax. And we're told what we can tax, the fee for the operator agreement is different, but if it means too much like a tax, then.
Well, if it's a percentage fee, though, I mean, that's just a semantics.
Right, right?
Yeah, basically, yeah. So.
Well, I guess if we get clarification from that in the D O R, then. That'll leave, settle that then, right?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
And what, to give, we're always told, well, as well as Ben mentioned, if you want to be more restrictive, we can be more restrictive. And our operating agreement, we can choose what we want in our operating. And you're exactly right, I mean, we, we tap the depth on that, and we compare it with other. A lot of them have their own liquor stores, so that changed the equation. Sold the license, and so that's all we could. So we were just there and all the operating. Percentages.
Okay.
But I think I've told you this before, but in the. Years ago, and we're going back years, we are, but I, I'm, I'm gonna have, place an argument with you right now on that deal.
I almost heard you say it in the past.
In the past, but if we don't learn from our mistakes from the past, we'll repeat them.
That's, that's, yeah.
And so we need to bring up the past from time to time so that we cannot do that. At any rate, in the past, when I first came to this town and had the bar. My mother and I. The town bought all the liquor. It was the town's money. And the town, the finance officer, came to the bar once a month and counted the liquor, every bottle of beer, every can of beer, every. Ounce in a bottle, so it was like, okay, there was a, a half, five, or fifty percent of the court was gone. And so everything was counted by the town, and then they charged us from what we used. What, what they had bought, what we had used, and that's how we got charged. Per month on our fee, rather than the way it is now. And then the town decided that it no longer wanted to cover the cost of that. And I can tell you where, in the beginning, what, what made it so fruitful for the bar establishment, for the owner, was that. When Old Milwaukee was on sale for five bucks a case, or whatever it was. We could buy a hundred and fifty cases because we had a cooler that was big enough to handle that. And so the profit margin was better because of that. Now, you, you can't do that, you know? And back, and Old Milwaukee was our best seller back then, by the way.
That was back in the day.
So, well, you know, that's what I'm saying, back in the days, yes. Right, right. I, I mean, it's, the bar business is totally different. Yeah, yeah, but that's how the, uh, percentages got paid back then.
And I don't have an issue with the five percent as long as whatever the legal issues are, were dealt.
Right.
The only, the only. The only, the only downside of that, that I found, realistically, is... If I'm paying the five percent on invoice, and I have a staff member who dropped a case of booze that was two, you know, two hundred dollar case, or five hundred dollar case booze, and just, oh... Not only the cost of that, but the additional price.
Five percent that you're getting.
That's, uh, forty.
That's the only rest real on call, other than, you know, I'd say it's, uh...
I mean, it, it kind of makes the onus on the... The seller to be, uh, very careful on tracking all the inventory too.
Very busy, yeah.
Make sure that, that all the, the liquor is being accounted for, you know? That's the incentive on you, so.
With the, uh, the percentage?
Yeah, on invoice, yeah. So are you guys ready to move to the next item?
I'm good.
Over here with the town booster pump. So we have the two different packets here. Terry, would you mind, um, kind of explaining the difference, cause at first glance, it might look like we have two the same thing, but it's really not.
Um... So Chuck Burrow infected the eleven propies that currently have the booster pump, so that's the first report, and then he identified... Six of them that he feels needs immediate...
Yeah, the second section starts on page eight of the... Damage package. And then, so on page eight, these are the ones that Chuck, Chuck Reed, got another Chuck.
Yeah.
Yeah, Chuck Reed recommends that we remediate these ones, or, you know, that these ones be remediated.
So just go through these real quick, I guess. At whatever speed you guys wish.
It's only the second packet. The seven.
Six, seven. Sixteen?
Oh.
Yeah.
Six plus the town.
I mean, from the list that we got from Chuck two, it, it appeared that at least every pump had leaked once, is that true? You guys...
There's been various leaks, yeah, and, and they did themselves, and had... Some of the leaks that were in the connections themselves, some of them leaked in the... The body itself, uh, a... Conversation that I had with the supplier... And went to Dr. Foss. Immediately, they had done some revision... Um, modifications. On the pumps, they had basically... Two-year warranty on them. And several of them exceeded the warranty, so they were... Taken out, the, the company... Supplier... That was... That's dropped, that line of pumps, went to a different brand. Had several conversations with the Dr. Foss... Representatives themselves, and explaining to them... Yeah, there was damage... Of the pump leaking. And how they intended to handle that. And, uh... Didn't get a very good answer. Yeah. So consequently, uh... I'm thinking... We're gonna have to get a line. And try and get... Reclamation from Dr. Foss Manufacturing, they're worldwide, however... These pumps were declared defective. And they had made several modifications to them, however... Some of those still leak. Um... You know, a final inspection, most generally, the homeowner would call and say, you know, pump leaking. Originally... The pumps were installed... To divert one system. Uh, booster station, roughly... Two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. All of these homes are previously pumps for these boosters. And it cost the fourteen thousand dollars. Uh, the pumps were installed. I did not make the pump, the distributor did not make the pumps. Dr. Foss Manufacturing did. So... Legality of it, you're going to have to... Contact Dr. Foss. Or... And other people involved at this point. Independent inspection, as you can see, who they were, what... The, uh, result of their inspection was on page four. And at that point, that I talked to... The distributor... They indicated that that probably was an issue... Went to homeowner's insurance. And my reply to that was that... That the warranty, or whatever... That the manufacturer should be... Eldestable... For the latest, um... And I talked to Hey briefly about that, and, uh... As we replaced the pumps, and, uh, you know... They would usually call, and tell you, oh, the homeowner has a little responsibility, and they don't know, kind of, the same correct, of... Pressing holes where the... Leak coming to the kitchen seat, took the whole damn floor out of the kitchen because... Nobody had cleaned that out underneath the sinks for months and months and months. They discovered it was a leak, and we have the same situation happen in our own. So I'm guessing that's... If we intend to replace, uh... I think there's just a couple of them have been replaced with the new... New brand of them. So... They're probably up in that... Five or six, maybe. Most of them are in plain sight, so it's... A little hard for me to believe that they didn't notice that they were leaking at one point. The manufacturer says, well, you need to put a drain pan on them, and, uh, they're supposed to leak a little bit. And I said, I don't think so, Tim. Uh, so... That's where it's at, and over a period of time, of course, they seem to have created... Mold issues and whatever, you know, and those, uh... So that's where it's at, and I have to probably replace all of them. Except for two, that I know of. We have... Went around and checked some of them that people have never, never, ever called.
Which ones have the new ones?
What's that?
Do you know which ones have the new ones? Which homes?
I think, no, I don't, well, have, uh... They put the new brand in, or...
Yeah.
Even the remodified... One's leak at some point. So... I had talked to Kent briefly about, uh, contact, I think, um, Dr. Foss. What their reply is, I'm sure that... They put thousands of these pumps out, so this is not an isolated case.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, um, I agree.
So I think we kind of, I think the last time we were on this one, we had Anthony here, it was kind of like, all right, let's get some numbers, and we're kind of gonna go down the insurance path, right? Like, I think this is the point where we need to notify the town insurance of what we're at, talk to purchase and construction insurance, and I think they have a lot more power to say, manufacturer, you're gonna pay for this than either of us, any of us do. And we're, we don't need our attorney to go off and try to, we need them, they've got the horsepower to make this right.
They probably are gonna battle it out, but the problem is the timeframe. You know, we've talked to... Make sure as hell it lets you know when they don't have any pressure. But they don't really... Stay asleep and...
Well, I mean, this whole situation's really illustrated a lot of issues that, that have come up from this, and, uh, I mean, going forward, I think... Uh, I know Anthony's recommended we create a separate water user in the system for people with these pumps, so they can be, um, tracked and notified differently. Uh, at least until we get, you know, in my view, these pumps should be completely removed once we get the booster on the hill, uh, project, which is gonna be wild, so... But in the meantime, if we're gonna be replacing pumps, I know I would like to see the pumps being moved to under the house or somewhere outside of the living space, and what we need to do also is add some, uh... Like moisture detection thing, where if it, if it does start leaking, it will beeping all the hell, and then people will know that that's going on, you know, uh... I mean, do you, so Chuck, do you recall when this whole thing started? Like, what, what was the purpose of it? Like, was the town going to install the pump for the person one time, and then, then it's up to the person to do it?
That was one of the issues itself. Uh, we had an issue with our maybe booster pump on the hill.
Right.
And that was... If that booster was in place... And operational... Everybody had wonderful water pressure, except there was... Some wiring issues in there, and we kept tripping breakers and... No rhyme or reason, or date, or time, you know, it could be midnight, could be Sunday, could be... I actually replaced our line... Going into that, you know, it's thinking that we had dirty power, and they checked it out for two weeks.
Yeah, I mean...
Put a monitor on it.
Can I just ask, so when you, I mean, I understand the need for putting the booster pumps in the houses at the time. Do you recall what was the town intent? Was the town intending just to install the booster pump and then turn the maintenance and responsibility of that over to the citizen?
That I cannot answer, I know that just... Reason for installing them was to get... Their pressures boosted individually in the houses. By doing that, then we could swap over and increase volume and pressure... In the fire hydrants. Uh, the way it was before... With that particular booster, they had no fire protection at all, and it was side the highway. And there was some awful story. So the immediate... Intent was to... Get fire protection in addition to suitable pressure in the houses. I can't really tell you the exact date, but we can probably get deep enough in the archives, we can find it, when they were initially putting it.
Sure.
I don't remember there being a discussion at all about...
Okay.
Uh, speaking responsibilities?
Yeah, I don't remember any discussion on that at all.
Do you recall then, do you know about what time that was, so we can check the motion, or?
I thought we were back, like we had... Thought... Six, seven years... Back... Uh, COVID time. At twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, no, I think that was before the last, I mean...
Yeah, COVID was five years ago.
Five years, yeah.
And it's a matter where cases were still involved with us, and, and if, if I can read the minutes and see how that read, cause I know... The Western stuff said about how he was gonna contract it, and the responsibility of the install on it versus the, um, paying for it.
So, um, Terry, you tried looking that up already?
I, I had no idea how long ago it'd been.
Yep.
Okay.
I could probably... Do a little research, and probably been pointed down to...
If I could get a...
Approximately time.
Time frame, you know, help, otherwise there's a lot of...
At least... I guess in five years, but some of them, I'm working, you know, we know, like, prior to that, by...
Right.
Yeah, um, yeah, so... I guess once we figure out that, then we'll, I have some more information on how we might proceed in the future, but for now, let's, uh, let's check out the second packet, and if you guys have a chance to look at all the pictures in the first one?
I did.
I was in there, and I toured the mill and her house. Uh, they, they had, uh... Tried to find the end of the hole, they, they couldn't, and you kind of got a little bit squeamish, they had to dig into it, so they, they decided to stop, but anyways, um, so page nine, water damage estimate summary table, I mean, this, so these, these numbers here are for... Uh, the quotes for Chuck Reed's repair. Well, yeah, it's, it's for Chuck Reed's company to come in and perform the mold and moisture remediation only, and so that gets it back to build-ready. So if they have to take cabinets out, well, this doesn't pay for the new cabinets, it just pays for getting the envelope of the house back up to, uh... Oh, build-ready status. And as you can see, has a pretty high estimate on there.
Well, surprisingly enough, I'm...
Yeah.
Now, I'm not replacing any...
That's just mold remediation.
Yes.
And he actually, he estimated high, cause like, if he had to go into an area, if this spot was wet, then he estimated like taking a bigger, and maybe that they didn't need, so this, he, he was pretty sure it would be lower than this, but...
Well, the, the cost for the remediation, the...
There's no way to estimate what the, the payers would be on top of this stuff.
But, uh, the thing is, is the, we're getting it back to livable, this isn't livable, this is... Now you can add cabinets, now you can put drywall back up, you know, put your insulation in, put your flooring down, you know, and, and get it back to livable, so, I mean, I don't know what an estimate on these would be, I mean, you might be able to, to double the numbers to get a, an estimate, but like I said, it's, or like you guys said, it's kind of an insurance thing, I think, at this point.
Nine ten West Main is, which one is the one that you visited?
Nine ten.
That was nine ten?
Mm-hmm.
And he didn't give us anything on repair, just on remediation?
Yeah, that, all of these are on remediation only.
Oh, I thought that other, uh, maybe I was... One, one, that one that was just the one.
Yeah, well, I mean, there's, so...
We could try that.
There's, there's some things going on here, but looking forward, um, I mean, I think it's gonna be the one taking this over, so we'll make sure that they know that we need to put the pumps out of the living envelope. Uh, that they need to have a, uh, a moisture or drip alarm, so that people can be aware, and then also, uh... If we end up doing the water user, uh, segregation, you know, only on the booster pump, uh, issue that, uh... We can also have kind of an education campaign too, and just let them know what this is all about, and, and then...
One of the things they're looking at too, that pumps had to be installed at the incoming source of water, and that...
Yeah.
Was in various places.
Right.
Everywhere. You know, it all come up underneath the house somewhere, but... You know, it all come up underneath the house somewhere, but to prevent them from freezing.
Right, yeah.
All stations under trailers.
Yeah, well, I know there's a lot of, uh, there's a lot of things that have to be taken into account, I mean, but is. I mean, if we're just, we don't want to pump the freeze, but if it does freeze and drips under there or freezes and breaks. It, at the end of the day, it's gonna be cheaper than, you know, mold remediation and stuff too, so.
Kind of like water heaters, you know?
You know.
And if it freezes, dude, then it's, it's pumped for eight hundred dollars a piece.
Well, remediation is ninety seven hundred and stuff. You know, I mean, that's kind of the point here. Uh, and the other thing too is if we're gonna have them in an area that can freeze or something, we're gonna have to have some kind of heat blanket or something on too, I mean. But at the end of the day, I think that, that that effort and the possibility for failure in there. If it does fail, it kind of takes a lot of extra things out of the loop there, so, um, I don't know. I would just advocate for that when we get to that point.
How long do we think it's gonna be until? We can provide them water without those pumps?
Well, I mean.
What are we looking at?
So we have the piping for that bunker in there where the pumps are now. They have the new piping that should accommodate those full-size pump, which I believe is a four inch. If I'm mistaken, that's just my current understanding, it may be, maybe end up, ends up being margins, but that piping is gonna be included in our, uh, water. Oh, the pump itself isn't gonna be included in water pump, so we will have to get a funding source for that to install the new booster. Once the piping is done.
There almost has to be a separate line that is across the road because it can't segregate the six-inch line. Distribution and fire protection, so if you're gonna designate. Orange line, six inch line, whatever you wanna put across there.
Right.
To supply domestic use. At the pressure you're looking at. The problem with it is the booster pump does not differentiate whether you run a hydrant or a faucet.
Right.
And our, we managed to ramp that pump up, but at this point, the engineering has not been done. To accommodate that.
So we've, so I guess what the, the answer is, is that it's gonna be a while.
A while, a year?
I would say more, yeah.
Two years?
It'd probably be a year just to, more than a year before we get all our, our new water situation online. And then after that, then we have to look at, like what Chuck's saying with the engineering, uh, to get the, a booster pump in there. That can accommodate the fire flow and stuff and, and maybe what it does is it just bounces itself out and we have a straight line next to it or something to.
You're probably not in a situation that those faulty pumps should be replaced. And then the damage is the next issue. There's obviously if you start tearing everything off and redoing, they're not gonna have any water pressure. Uh, different brand to be installed in the place, that's not, that's not a huge deal, I mean. Screw the connector apart and screw them back new one in. The damage is another complete different force.
Right. Well, and I think at this point, we don't really know how the town is gonna proceed on the damage. Uh, we have to turn it over to insurance and see what they're gonna say about the situation. That's, that's what my understanding is.
The bottom line is, I didn't make the pumps, the town did not make the pumps and the distributor did not make the pumps.
Right.
More solely on the manufacturer.
Right.
And I'm guessing this is not the only case.
Yeah, but there's nothing that, like Aaron said, there's nothing we can do, I'm not gonna drive over to Germany and.
I think we've already done more than our insurance company probably would want us to do. And, um, and I'm just taking that from the experience in this town from twenty years ago. Previous problems, yes, and the, the se- and it's horribly sad, horribly sad. Because back then, if, if we, if the insurance companies would have let us handle it and then paid for it. It would have been so much cheaper and then it would have been done within a six months period of time instead of. How long did it take to finally settle that case, four years, five years? It was terrible, but we can't. I mean, if we take this on, then we're gonna have to take everything that ever happens in this town on. And we can't do that, I mean, we can't, we can't take those liabilities on. So, I mean, and I, I'm with Chuck, I also agree that the pump, now that we know the pumps are bad, we should change the pump outs. Maybe, maybe, maybe it would, right. Right, we should maybe go ahead and do that, but that should maybe be. The end of our responsibility until the insurance companies take over, I, I don't know.
Yeah, well, there. Uh, just real quick, my opinion on getting this report done and stuff like that, it's just so we have an idea of what's going on out there. Because before Chuck Three started going around to the houses, I really didn't know what was going on and I couldn't find out. And so to me, this is necessary for us to know so that we even have an idea of the animal that we're facing. You know, and so.
Well, and I think it's good we can tell the insurance company, you know?
Right.
This is.
Yeah, and then I think also we should do some building inspection on the, uh, from, through a building inspector and get a second report done. So we have two independent reports, two different styles of, um, inspectors, one mold for remediation. And one for building, and then we can, uh, get a more fleshed out and a high resolution picture of what's going on here, so. Anyways, Aaron.
Um, oh, I think what just happened is in the media, we'll see what costs may still be leaking out.
Well, it's in here, yeah.
Yeah, it's three noted in there that are.
I seen that.
I think, um, I was gonna say that, I mean, this is gonna be the kind of thing that Neil and Anthony are seeing, something, maybe, you know, that, this exact thing. But they must have dealt with insurance situations like this before, right, have they, have they said much along those lines, with like thoughts on?
Well, now, now that they have, now that we've adopted them through our water sewer operations, then. You know, I'll have a further conversation with them on it and see, uh, because I know the building inspection was gonna be like. The first step in that and for them to, to know what's going on on their side and to be a hundred percent sure. I mean, uh, and then whatever we're gonna do, we can proceed, obviously, we need to take care of these situations. To whatever degree, but then again, you know, we need, the, the thing is, is we need to understand. Well, under what onus were these pumps installed to begin with, you know, and then how did that change over time? And if it did change over time, for what reason did it change over time?
We could probably find the exact.
Yeah.
The town purchased, oh, I did not, oh. And there was so much involved in installation, if I recall, it was like a hundred and fifteen dollar. Um, and so they had previously had pumps and I'm sold, there was very little plumbing. That was done, it was mostly maintenance, not new installation. So like I said, the town initially bought, like, find that out, what not actually started, but we didn't really have any issues. So about two years, just enough for them to run on the warranty.
As it goes, right?
And every time we pull one take then they pull a series of numbers, gives that one just like.
If you get, if you get the date, Chuck, I can start, I can come in and see if I can go from that point forward and just try to take through everything.
Because. That would reflect a two-year warranty. So it may not be fine as long. But we think that they were done.
All right, Dan, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, so what is the status on the two inch, who's to have never had an old one after all of these?
Uh, it's.
That was our big thing, then the engineer was so done against putting these individually in. Because of the problems that we've done, and she warned us back then of it. And.
Yeah, well, for these.
Would satisfy, and that's why the fire protection, with the fire department right there, was the effect of why they were posting out that their insurance wasn't affected.
Sorry, what was that then, the last thing?
Well, I just said that's why the insurance company is sending out an effect on their insurance, because fire departments are posted. And that's the other situation, if they're close enough in the vicinity, then they don't get off. Out of having a fire protection possibilities with the I W S, which we were. And that's why having to do it should be better for the other, well, whatever it more means back in the day.
Thank you.
And risking problems, all right, Chuck, then then it wasn't a big deal. And now here we are. Bottom line is damage and no damage to replace, otherwise we didn't manufacture the function.
Bill?
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Move forward.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
So, uh, yeah, so.
So we don't know what's wrong with the door.
Well, I think the thing is, is they're gonna take those pumps and put them over at the water tower to run.
Over a year or whatever.
What that?
It'll be over a year and all, right?
One, yeah, well, that's my understanding, uh, but I mean, the thing is, is if we, if we take. We take the booster pumps out and we run on the two inches. Then at some point, we're gonna have to take the two inches out, put them over there, and then now the people don't have a booster pump or in their house or on the hill. And then we'll have to go back to those anyway, I think, because the whole infrastructure of up, upgrading the infrastructure up there. To accommodate a bigger booster pump where we don't even need these, that's gonna be another step, I think, well. The infrastructure will be upgraded from my current understanding, but the ability to put a pump in there and run it will not be without another project.
And that, I mean, Anthony said with the power over there, we wouldn't even possibly need it because of the gravity. Well, that's coming from that tower down and then the graphic we have here will handle everything from this way. And the only thing would be Wolfson Court would be the only place that would be in effect. That we may have to run line as what we talked years ago about, just separately for them. Yes, if you look, elevation is very close. When the new tower is going up, it's a lot easier, so other than the volume, I don't suspect that there's gonna be. A huge amount of difference in water pressure unless the tower itself is taller. If the new tower exceeds what the height of these are, then you will expect no water pressure. And that's the idea, everything on the west side of the highway. Cause the school's got fifty-six pounds and now our development is seventy-five pounds and. Over in the trailer park is seventy-five pounds, I mean, the problem is across the highway. Yeah, and there, I talked to Anthony and Greg, he did about that several times and. Re-energizing this booster up here is not gonna, that's why he wants to pull all the pumps. There are only forty gallon pumps, there must be some engineers. Six inch lines coming in, bustle down two inch and then ramp back up to six inch after it leaves the pit. And two forty gallon minute. Booster pump, you open the fire, I have a five hundred gallon.
Yeah. Uh, Darren, did you have a comment?
I, um, just wanna see if we need to like put together some passport, we're going to talk to insurance, right? Um.
That's in process.
Okay, should we have, uh, Neil give us?
We need, we need to contact another individual for reinspection, you know, which you're recommending.
Well, yeah, I believe that, that Anthony's gonna do that.
So we have two opinions on.
Yeah, and then on their side, then they have a idea of what's going on and.
I guess. Is phenomenal, with old stuff and they have sprays that they can actually knock that stuff down a lot of times without them moving. And I haven't really jumped.
Yeah.
And a couple instances on apartments and very knowledgeable, and it was twenty-seven years. Established team, which is really good, one very detailed, works with insurance companies, used to it, used to mitigation with insurance companies. The guy is spot on.
Right, okay, well, I mean, if, if we need to go in that, that route, then.
Or an opinion, if you need.
It's a good office, yeah.
We just need a building inspector at this point, right?
Uh, that, that's the current, uh, understanding, yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll talk to Anthony about this in more detail. We'll see what, what they recommend going forward, but, uh, so, I think. I think just, we just need to get on the same page, uh, understand what's going on here, look at the, uh, the reports. Get an idea of the situation, make sure that we're kind of aware of where we're at right now. So, uh, you know, like, I don't know. I don't know, like, how much more we should do at this exact point in time.
That's just a problem, excuse me, but this is a problem on any of you, but then you attempt to pay off these people and you're admitting guilt.
Well, this.
As far as the insurance companies are concerned.
Well, that's an interesting point, because what happened, at least in this case, was the homeowner calls the town. And the town, I mean, somehow Chuck Two got dispatched to go up there.
They usually contact me, but they.
Well, either way, but.
After some of multiple times, why they have his number on speed dial, especially his mind.
Well, right, but so they call the town, Chuck Two comes up, replaces the shelf that it's sitting on, cause it's full of mold, replaces the pump. And so in their mind, it's a town problem, and then of course, we know what they were told when. And he was up there, and so, uh, you know, it's, uh. I mean, I'm not, I don't have the legal mind to know what we should do in this case as far as trying to mitigate the town liability. Uh, you know, obviously, we don't wanna leave people in a lurch, but there's, uh. But there's a lot of potential here, so.
I still, I still think so, but it's a little, well, the owner's problem, not the town's problem.
Right, but the thing is, is if they call the town and then somebody comes over and fixes it, then, then they can't assume. Hold on, Chuck, then they can't assume that it's their problem, because the we, they've, they've already been demonstrated to, that it's not their problem. You know, so.
That should never happen.
Right, and, and the other issue with this is the fact that there was not, never like a clear delineation from the outset, as far as I can tell. Now, if we look back into the minutes and stuff and see what the intent was, then maybe that will become more clear. But, you know, there wasn't really a, a strict delineation here between homeowner responsibility. What the intent was, then maybe that will become more clear, but you know, there wasn't really a, a strict delineation here between homeowner responsibility and stuff too. Which is, you know. Can fall, you know, probably on previous boards and stuff like that, and, and just, you know, the, the, the way that business was done in the. You know, up to this point, so.
Uh. It's, it's unfortunate that the town, well, the effect, the effect of the problem.
All right.
And then you have the reoccurrence, you know, but really long, you know.
Yeah.
So, um, I mean, are you guys okay to go on to the next one? Deb, you have one last thing?
I was just wondering if you had said that the. Effect in two years ago, notice that they were starting to, but was it ever brought to the town's attention, like those pumps were bad or?
Many times. And one company had about forty five years old track tool in the car.
I know, company might, but I mean, did Melissa ever rock in front of the board?
Obviously, where, right, you know, within the years' time, there was issues with them, that stuff. They were late, and we called them, got their one. Some of those, like, they never. He doesn't do any good to replace a. Bad manufacturing pump or another bad, but, but, you know. You gotta change brands or do something, and. He, uh, he was. You know. I sat there on conference calls with Ron Foss of T S T and. They ensured the wholesaler that the problem had been fixed. That was not the case. They just kept, well, it had a two year warranty on it, so. If they need, they give you another one. And. Everybody knew they were defective pumps. After the fact.
Yeah, Dan.
Oh.
All right, uh, well, let's move on to item C then. Um, and so Lynn, do you wanna start this one off?
So.
Yeah, so it's the, the shorts list.
Uh.
And then item D is abatements. Need a quick little edit at the beginning, I think the abatements is basically just a report about what's going on, is that right?
Pretty much, yeah.
Okay.
So, on the shore. Situation, I got a call from. Thank you, God, from Bridget yesterday, and she was at her with them, um, up there, and, um. She'd, they'd been, she'd been shoveling and sweeping gravel off of their concrete driveways because it, you know, washes down in there, and we all know the hard rains we've had. And, you know, it's not, that's not the only place there's been washes happening, however, um. The issue becomes that, you know, they, they filled out a complaint form, um, months and months ago with several items on the list. And, and basically it hasn't been addressed, we've talked about it several times, we've, um. Come up with a couple of prices even from time to time, um, but, so yesterday, um. She came to the town, but I didn't know she had come to the town when she talked to me. So, and I don't even know, I guess I could probably look on my phone to see if she came, she called me first, or if she came to the town first. Let me check that out, and, um. Uh. Anyway, her husband was getting the tractor. And. Taking it up there and gonna do some work himself. And at that point, what I told her was that. That I was terribly sorry that we, I myself, and I assure the entire board. Had no idea that this project was gonna take so long to get completed, because that was one of the last things we had told her, that we would not fix that road. Look permanently. Until we were done working up at the tower area with all these new water systems and stuff. Excuse me. And so, like I said, I told her, I, you know, in my mind, I would have thought it would have been done by now, and I'm sorry. So something probably does need to get done, because now we're looking at a year or two. But she said, well, I don't know what he's gonna do, if he's gonna send you guys a bill or not, and I said, well. I will talk to Cal and see if Cal can come up and take a look at it. And I said, Dan's kinda sorta on streets now, and I said, I know he put in a proposal before for fixing it. I said, I know Chuck talked about fixing it also, I said. We can see if anybody has time to do a little fixing, but something definitely needs to be done. And at that point, um, I hung up with her and I did call Cal. And asked him to go up and, and look at the situation, I was not in town, I was working, and so. He did so, I also called. Dan, who did not answer his phone, so I called Deb at the office and told her, um, kinda what was going on. And that he might need to get his proposal, Dan might need to get his proposal out again or whatever. Because we, we need to start working on this list, like I said, this has been months since they turned that in, since they filed it with the town. And so since then. Um, I guess I know nothing. So Cal kinda took over after that, I think, so.
Yeah, I went up there, talked to Bridget, took a few more pictures of the situation. And, um, you know, I just, she kinda gave me the history of kinda the happenings with the water pressure in the road, stuff like that. Uh, just over time since they built all the, uh, duplexes. And, um. Anyway, I, I basically talked to her about that, you know, one thing I did though, is I talked to Anthony in that. Looking at the list, and he's very well aware of the list that needs to be done, because I think he's basically the, uh. The guy to help get that list made and then sent up, so I did ask him if he could begin addressing that list under our operations agreement. And he said that that is a feasible thing to do, and so, uh. I did inform the short to that, so we'll see how it goes, but, uh, I'll need to talk to Anthony and. See if we can get a plan fleshed out and maybe a timeframe set, see what, what on the list. We can do and what, you know, he's, he's gonna have an idea of. There's anything on the list that is something that we shouldn't be doing, then, you know, we'll do that, I mean. Maybe do a, uh. Session or we offline, take a hard look at the list and make sure that we understand everything that's on there. And kind of where our responsibility would lie with that, so, anyway, Aaron, then Donna.
So this is, uh, this is the top of the hill, and this is. Streets up there, that's all go up there or inlet, you wanna give me those pictures you took, I'll do a work order, because we really don't need anything on the streets being touched anymore at all, unless there's a work order in place. We need to start to track things and make it clear everything's. Eyes down and teeth crop, so.
Yes, sir, yep, and, and Wade did go up there with his tractor, and I did talk to him, uh, kinda in between while he was going up and down the road there. And, you know, they're, they're basically kind of on their last nerve, and, uh, you know. Every time it rains hard, they're gonna have a driveway full of gravel, and obviously, they're trying to have some, uh, nice duplexes and nice houses up there, so. Uh, you know, that's not the thing they wanna have happen down that property.
And we don't need to disband it either, we need it to be done.
Right, yeah, and so there's gonna have to be, uh, whatever the fix is, is gonna have to be, um. Within our budget, but also. Not a band-aid, an actual long-term fix, one thing that's different up there than. When I think the situation began was, so if you're driving up Tower Road, you come up to where you're facing the gate. Which is to the north almost directly, duplexes are to the east, if you look west, there's like a gravel path there. That is where the garbage trucks turn around. There used to be a ditch right there, that, so the west side of Tower Road. Had a drainage ditch, but since they put that pad in, rest of the garbage trucks can't go across the ditch. Uh. All the water now comes across the road and goes down into their driveway, so that's, that's. Reason why we have an issue now, so there's gonna have to be some kind of, uh, water. Remediation or, or some kind of. Structure or something built inside the gate. That'll bring the water around maybe, and down the west side again, maybe through culvert under the pad, or however. We need to do it so that the water does not run off of the. Off of the top of the hill and come down and then go east into their driveways, so that's, that's basically. The issue as it stands right now. Donna, did you have a question?
I just gonna say, there's been a tremendous amount of rain, hard rain.
Yep.
And I, you know.
It's not even done yet.
Yeah, I know that this problem been going on for months, but under the sort of intense weather, the way it's been lately. It's. Unfortunate, cause their place isn't the only one that's got wars.
Well, I mean, her. I think the reason why it's a big issue to them is. At one point, when the road was first built, all the drainage went to the west and they didn't have this problem. And then over time, with the maintenance of the road and then the creation of that pad and the, the ditch got built in. Now it all kinda goes down to the other side, so, uh. You know, in their view, they had a solution. To begin with, and then, so we need to. I'm not saying we need to, but. There needs to be, uh, another. Or a solution found that, or that. Water situation is taken care of, I guess.
Anytime you have. You know, that. Um, elevation, you don't have washing problems, what needs to probably happen there. At one point, they were talking about elevating the road, so the road. Flow to the west. I'm thinking starting about the gate there somewhere, diversion ditch probably would. Get everything over into that west drainage, but you're, you know, I mean, we've got a washing problem even in that ditch, because so. The angle is so severe that you get any rain at all, and I mean, it's gonna look. Third Street right over here is a very good example, and it is a very street, I mean, that thing washed that deep.
Yep.
And has two or three times, even after the drainage was corrected from coming down the alley and, you know, you just. You're gonna have those kind of situations anytime when you have a lot of runoff. And a diversion ditch up there probably would. Curtail ninety percent of it, but the whole road. So, you know, I mean, you have to bring it up a little on the east side, and that creates other issues with the driveways going down, and it's gonna have to be. Uh. In a situation where it isn't hindering traffic in and out, but yet it will divert the water. I mean, I've seen it for years, you know, and he indicated that Donnie A. that'll build that road, and that's not so. That road going up to the tower was. Going straight up from the highway, it was very, very steep and washed for the last forty years. And it was changed when they did. New highway. Did the switch back in it because it was so steep. That they did a switch back in it to cut that down, and that was done by Zanstra. When they go to new highway, they cut that approach back in there, and even a main line was involved in some of that with the. Grange and the curb and gutter and the storm sewer and. Anytime you live on a hill, you're gonna have some washing issues.
All right, Dan?
Yeah, and then when I put my bid together for that up there. It was to redefine that west side, put some bigger sugar rock in there. Take and level that pad out, because I basically did pad up there originally too, and we did have that defined. It was everything that washed up from up above. That pushed everything back over and created the drainage pumps that we have coming off of our belt.
Okay.
And so it was put in there to fill it up with a couple more loads of gravel, do a little drainage road out so we could burn off. Push more stuff to the west, but you gotta have some east drainage too.
Right.
Otherwise, you're gonna create twice the problems by using the bigger rock. We would be able to do that with the inch and a half sugar rock, basically, to do pad and then do the ditch, so. We had a description detailed on every step of what was gonna be done, because it was to be dead.
Mm-hmm.
So we've wrote everything up that we needed for anybody to look at it and. What needed to be created for that pad and up our back and. Everything on it, so, and I believe I gave that paperwork to Terry.
Okay, well, let's, uh, I guess we'll. Uh, if you can, I guess, scan it and send it to me, please, and then I'll take a look at it, and I can. Talk to, uh, engineering about it and see. Uh. What we need to do on there. Yeah, so if we have to bid it out, then we're gonna have to. We have, it sounds like you have the project pretty well defined, right?
I did, I had all. Full description written up of everything that I've made me address, and I don't have a problem meeting up there and walking through it too and explaining it.
Okay. Yeah, what do you guys think about that?
Well, I think we'll talk to Anthony, have Anthony look at it.
Yeah, yeah, I'll get a work order up and he can just pop up. Yeah, once it's all on Silver Smith and a work order, he'll just be able to open it up and look at it. Put whatever comments, whatever he thinks, you know.
All right, and they all dive in. Are you guys, you guys wanna move forward with the remediation of this?
Well, I think I should meet with Anthony and let him, I mean, like you said, that's all he gets paid to do boxes to. Engineering knowledge and special cases.
Yeah, yeah, with the visibility on us, we can't do anything until Anthony's got eyes on it, I don't think.
I agree with the fact that Anthony needs to look at it, I, I think that, um. After he looks at it and he can, um, you know. Make a recommendation, we can see, I, I think that, um. They've done enough work on it now that we don't have to worry about it for a day or two, I think, um. So that, that's kind of helpful, but.
Well, sort of paving and concrete and that.
curb and gutter.
Something that's steep and gravel, and just gotta wash, that's all it is to it. How you get anything, and what you do is another story.
Great, okay, well, I, I think that's a pretty, pretty good path right now on that one, so. You get that, Terry? All right. Great, so on to the abate.
Can, can we go? Yeah, so however you wanna look at it, the, but it's in the same subject. Um, when we had that really hard rain in the evening, five o'clock-ish or whatever, and I was, uh, I had pulled through town to pick up my husband and then was going back to work. And, um. That's when we had that hard, hard inch and a half of rain, and. I mean, this Whitney Street was just. I mean, I don't, I swear, it was a foot deep in the lower spot, and I called Cal immediately and I said, I don't have time, I am working. Uh, but I think you should come up and take some pictures and, and check this out and maybe go around the rest of town town also and see how it was. Um, the ditch in front of my house was totally full and running through to where it's supposed to, and also going over across the road and. I guess it kinda takes off and goes down, um, Third Street then, or. Manning Street then, um. And I, like I said, I didn't get to go through the rest of town, but, and that was when you all were, um, at the meet and greet for law enforcement. Is when that, that timeframe was.
It was sideways.
It, I mean, it, yeah.
We had six feet into the store, the water flowing in because of the rain was hitting the doors, letting into the store.
Really, yep, I mean, it was bad, it, it was fast and furious, you know, so, um. Cal's seen a lot of the drainage issues probably better than he'd ever seen them before, because the amount of water that came through, and, um.
There's certain amount of water that even an eighteen inch cobble.
Oh, I'm telling you, absolutely, and there, and, and it's like every town set. Oh, I'm telling you, absolutely. And there, and, and it's like every town says. You, you know, the amount of rain that came down in that fast, that short amount of time. With an already saturated landscape. There was no place for it to go but to run and not even Sioux Falls. I mean, that, that. Kind of represents a hundred year flood, you know, in that short amount of time. Well, you. Yeah, it did, but you cannot, you cannot afford, not even the town of Sioux Falls can afford to size their culverts. To match those rains like that. But we, we do need to be aware of it and we probably need to make a few changes and, and do a few things within town, so. Um, I just recommend that all board members, um, when we have rains like that, drive around if you're in town. Look it over, take pictures. I mean, Anthony can't be expected to be here, you know, when those things happen. So without our proof, our data, our photos. So I'm, I just would like to recommend that to all the board members, please.
Okay, yeah, I know, I know I did learn a lot that. That day when we walked, drove around and saw what was happening and crazy enough. Now, where we live in Ferguson, so I think had the least amount of flooding.
Yeah, I know.
Which is kind of funny because it's the lowest part of town, but the way that everyone goes is what happened, so. Anyway, so you guys satisfied with this one?
The only thing that I can say is, and I didn't think of it to tell you at the time, but we probably should have went and looked at that drainage. Ditch that goes under the railroad tracks to see how much water was coming through there. So the next time, um, if you would take note of that if you're home. You're right down there, so it wouldn't take much for you to get over there to see it. It's right behind the house that's not within the city limits. What's their names? Like, I don't know who was.
The one down.
Horrible.
Horrible's place, old place, yeah.
That, that's that tan one that's. Right.
Right?
The driveway down the corner nears.
Yes, yes. Yep, right on the railroad track side of that, so. We need to make sure we know how much water's coming through there, make sure that that is not plugged again. Thank you for letting me bring that up.
Everybody okay now? Let's go on to the last item, abatements. So that's another one that Linda requested, get put on this work session, so.
Yeah, uh, when I read meters. I've always taken that upon myself when I was reading meters to write down those places that I thought needed help in. The abatement area, tall grass. The thing that I generally worry about the worst is what affects me as a meter reader. And if I have to swat through weeds this tall and worry about snakes. I maybe won't even do it. I might just write tall weeds estimate, you know. Because I, I, I'm not gonna, I don't wanna get bit by a rattlesnake, you know, and. So there were many, I, I'm, there had to have been at least thirty on the list. Um, and I realized part of that was because of the fact that we have had so much rain. And if your day offer does not. You know, coincide with a day that's dry so that you can mow, it makes it a little difficult. But some of these were even beyond that and the, the thistle, the weeds. That are on the state obnoxious weed list, there was many of those. Canadian thistle, yes. Um, and so when I came up to the office. Donna and Aaron were both sitting here and I, I told them that there would be a lot for them to look at. And so I don't know where that has totally ended up at, if. Any abatements have been written, sent out, if any phone calls have been made, I'm not sure where we're at on that. And if I need to go back out and take another drive or, or what.
Well, we checked out, we used to reach out and go down. And they all are good, other than three, three bad ones. So I guess we may decide if we're gonna send others out to them, how we're gonna handle it.
Same offenders most every time. They just don't have a yard and they don't care what it looks like.
Well, I just, it's upsetting. You know, I'm probably one of the most casual people here, but. I look at some of those yards over there that are so nicely taken care of. And to have the bad house right next door would be very annoying if I was the person that had the. Beautiful lawn and, you know, manicured. And then you have three foot weeds, you know, all along. On the other side, I mean, that's, that's one thing. It's totally different to just have a different style of. Landscaping, you know, but when you've got the three foot weeds, that's totally different ballgame. And I think, I just think we really need to do something about that issue. And, and then you're looking at. What, a week from tomorrow, we have the Custer County Fair and we're gonna have all these people in, in the town. Looking and, you know, the parade, we're gonna be going right down Main Street. I don't know.
The house right across the street here was horrible and again, that's an offender that has been chronic, you know. Yeah, it don't look like they've done anything over there, so. Um, you know, we put it on something on Facebook, you know, I know everybody does it on Facebook, but. Maybe kind of. If you're naming certain grass more. And Shelly and Dan Martin said they would mow anybody's grass if they wanted to.
There was, maybe still is, if I'm. You know, somebody needed help or is not able to do it, you know, to get it done, you know. There is ways of handling it, they're unable to do it themselves or don't have the money or don't have a lawnmower or whatever. All they gotta do is call here and ask.
Right. So we just, I, I think putting it on Facebook or whatever means you use, you know. Right, um, but there's no reason why it can't be just. Remember the fair is coming, let's make our town look pretty or, you know, as good as possible. We're gonna have the. Parade running through and, and so many people coming, just, you know, driving through town. And maybe that'll pump some people up to do some things and we do, we're lucky we have a weekend in front of us. With most people having weekends, so, well, yeah.
Just, uh, for information, I did finally get a hold of the right person about the railroad. And mowing those cars. And he's gonna adjust, address the situation. He said the thing is. It's that track that you're sitting on is kind of their dormant one that you can so, uh, store cars on it. He said, Rappahanna doesn't have any place for the cars. And he said, you know, people just aren't shipping now railroad because of everything. And he said he would, I said, well, I've been over the track since before school was out last year. And I said, now school's starting again and it's still over the track. Actually, I never thought to say the fair is coming, I would have said, but anyway, he's gonna. See if we can get a hand move before the school starts. I said, just put a couple car, I think, yeah, just get out with your little truck and push those cars. Two of them or something and split that so people can walk through there.
Okay, very good. So for the, uh, abatements, do you guys wanna start sending out notices? Is that what you're talking about?
Were we gonna do, uh, were we gonna go ahead and preemptively go with photos with the notices rather than just. Are we doing the photographs to the?
Yeah.
Abatements and everything? I thought that was kind of something that needs to be like, so it's.
I think that's a good idea. Do they need to, does the photos need to be on the notice too that goes out? Like bring it out and send to them?
Seems, that seems, well, maybe not like the first notice. But I think we need to have the photos, you know, maybe the first notice, it's just a letter before, before we go like, oh, now you're in trouble. I, I don't think we should, you know, I think we should get the photos right out of the gate and then maybe a notice and then. On the second notice with photos and then.
Is that gonna be a legal issue, taking photos of private property? I, I don't know, I just, I'm throwing that out there.
Anybody can take a picture of anything as long as they're outside and not on the private property, but if you're. Code enforcement officer and you're gathering evidence for the violation of a statute or law or.
I mean, I don't, for these, I don't think we have the time, the time to send out multiple notices. I mean, these are kind of like the.
Yeah.
You know, we need to take care of this breeding ground for pests. It's kind of like the way that everybody describes it, so. Uh, if we wanna do photos to report their current situation before the notice goes out and then we send the notice out.
Yeah.
I think that would be along with ninety-one oh four notice to bait. And then, um, the. Photos will. Put into Silver Smith, yes.
So when Jill was here, we, we had bought a camera for just these purposes. And it would total, it would go right in and she would plug it in and it would go right into the computer. However, she had it worked up. Do we still have that? And, um, is that something we want, um, Lindsay to do or do we want? Terry to do it or do we want one of us board members to do it? But that's just, I mean, we own the camera, that's what it's for.
Yeah, Lindsay doing, you know, I mean, she's, I don't have time.
To send her, uh, sending off the staff out to get involved with, I think we need to keep them as impartial or as on.
She could do the letters, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
If you guys wanna use the camera to do pictures, that's.
Is, is it the role of the abatement committee to, to identify the, the needs for abatement in the town? So then wouldn't it follow that whatever committee member that's noticing needs to be abated would also then take pictures of it? For if nothing else for a reminder of, of what needed to be abated and where?
Do we need to check on the cameras in good condition?
Where, where is the, yeah, Jill bought it. Isn't it here in the office? That one was sold, the invoice.
You're gonna get him cut before the fair, you let him go. Let's, uh, well, let's talk about that offline, but. What do you guys think about that?
I think that if it's a, somebody that we've had the same issues with. In other years, last year, other years, whatever, I think maybe we need to just roll with it and get it done. Send out the abatement if it's. I don't know, is that fair though? Is that fair that if then somebody that you haven't had issues with gets a phone call?
Why don't I say anything because our yard name, I'm being moved, now it's been moved, so I can stick, yeah.
I, I don't mow in one that's ninety-five degrees out because I don't want my grass to die.
To die, right.
So it's either soaking wet or it's ninety-five degrees, you gotta wait for the one eighty degree of day yet in a month and now.
Ours was, ours was really long, lawn mowed this weekend and, like he came in tonight and said, I already need to mow again. And I said, yep. So I mean, I, I understand that. It's the.
This. Brady mows the guy Bill next door and then it might be a couple of days before he gets ours mowed. Well, Bill's next door is about them, but.
Yeah.
Already.
Already needing it, yeah.
Also, you guys have a path forward that you'd like to take on this? On the, just being the committee, I mean, the notice says board of trustees are duly authorized agent, which the committee. Can, is probably fulfilling the duly authorized agent role at this point. If we wanted to bring all the abatements to the board, we could do that and go through a meeting. But I don't know that that's required, that we do have the duly authorized agent, so.
We should do a courtesy call and get in results and hammer.
Do we, do we have a current list of things that needs to get abated or? Anything like that, no?
I can go back out if you'd like me to. That's what the board decides. I can go back out and make my rounds.
I mean, do you guys wanna, you guys wanna figure out how you wanna get it done or?
What's the news deck?
I, I think it's not for the committee.
Who, who holds on the committee?
I am, I think.
You and, you and Donna only?
No, I think Shannon is.
Good.
You know, last year we did a live phone, not seem to go.
And Facebook, what's you thinking, help, right? Kind of maybe everybody clean up here, some kind of. Let's clean up our yards and be ready.
Put a door knocker.
Could even make it like a, do like a poster and just be like, hey, there's coming. Let's beautify Hermosa. Make it like a fun thing.
It's okay.
Well, anyways, um.
I'll go around.
All right, thank you. Okay, well, so are we done with the abatements then? Okay, um, items from constituents. So we have a couple constituents here. Were you raising your hand, Dan, or hiding in the face?
I'll let the girls go first, okay.
Okay, then.
Just came to watch?
Yeah.
Did you learn anything?
All right.
Okay, and I'll go through my list then. Abatements was a good portion of it too that, you know, like city lot that we got over here. It hasn't been touched at all and it's a disaster. The one across the street is a disaster. The county shop is a disaster. Getting our own stuff up back under and then trying to teach people to put a law on all the grass into the streets. Uh, is a horrible thing. The church up here, every time it's mowed, they blow everything in and all that grass goes, goes in storm drains.
No, 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 my grandson mowed that.
I know by its name, it's going in the storm drain every time. I mean, it's six inches tall in that part of the, so and then. People blowing the grass onto the gravel roads and so on and so forth, it just creates mud. So that's a biggie on that part of it. Uh, the normal violator on First and East Court down here, that's always. Two foot tall is horrible, hadn't been touched.
The one down there by the railroad tracks, he was out working on it the other day and then it got really hot.
Three branches that are stacked up line that haven't been touched for over a year and a half. You know, I just not pretty safe on that. You know, the lots by Dollar General. Should have been addressed that are for sale down there by Dollar General, but. We usually. Have the road ditches that we try to mow for parade along the highway. Uh, clean them up. The school has done a pretty doggone good job of keeping their stuff up this year and. This town should be mowing our right of ways too out there on them ditch lines and. Just doll it up. I did talk to Row Row to the track department and ask them to move all them Row Row guys that are still been there and I see that it started finally moving now. As far as the cars being moved, I said. There is private property there that needs to be considered too and there's easy ones coming across, but. There's, that needs to be addressed with the cars on that situation and that private property is respected. And the involvement on that portion of it also. And as far as our ordinances go, there are several like Linda said, other ones I've noticed around town, but it's the health, safety and welfare. It's our biggest thing of going after them and it's whether you do the photographs or not, they need to be addressed. And as far as the people that say it's, uh, you know, wait on the mowing a month so it's not hard on, it's actually harder on months. Not to mow them regularly and keep them on a regular basis than it is to let them go and then knock them down. It puts them more into shock, so consistency is the best thing.
Good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So, uh.
Well, one other thing too, uh, booming the streets. I'll see if my bristles have gotten one more round down after all of that. Prep them for the patch seal and I'll see if I can boom that gravel up.
Okay, all right, thanks, Dan. Okay, alright, thanks, Dan. Very good, so. I mean, does, you guys need any help on the abatement committee going through and identifying stuff, I mean?
I think we can handle it.
Handle it, alright, so you guys wanna take charge on i- identifying? The necessary abatements and then.
Well, we have to decide how we're gonna handle them. We should give you names, we can, you know, get Lindsay names, but I'll work on it.
Well, we just addressed that earlier in this meeting, so the first step is to identify. The second step would be to um, notify, so if you guys would like to start with phone calls, maybe that's the best way to do it. If you'd like to send out uh, notices, uh, you know, maybe that's the best way to do it or maybe a mixture of those if you know who it is. I mean, just if we wanna get this done by the time the fair comes in, we're gonna have to get moving on itself.
Do you have time to to drive around tomorrow day?
Do it in the morning.
What time?
Ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock, yes ma'am, ten o'clock, yep.
And deliver them to the doors, true?
No, no, not getting Derek involved in abatements, code enforcement, no. A lot of those.
I mean, it's, yeah, I don't, I don't think it would necessarily be good for him to do that, you know, but. Um, it's definitely something to uh, think about, I guess. Yeah, um, so with that, um, you guys will set on abatements, uh, trusty input, Linda?
Yeah, um, the fair and the parade and we really need to have. A float, a car, a whatever, um, cool, we did buy them last year, right, that just said. Hermosa Town Board Vice, what does it say? Okay, so we need, somebody needs to be in the parade or we need to make a float or something, so. Uh, and we don't have much time to discuss it, so I thought we should do that now. You're willing to drive? Or put your car in, okay, um, very good, you can go with her and that'll be good, okay? Do we need to buy candy then or something to throw out?
Yeah, I guess so. So much room in your car anyways to put all those big bumpy candies in there, so.
So you want me to just pick up some mixed candies or something?
I'm okay with that, is everyone else okay?
It's just not chocolate.
If it's gonna be hot?
Not too hard.
I was gonna say.
I don't know, you know, I'd say not chocolate because it's gonna be hot.
Okay, Linda, was that everything you had to input?
Yep, thank you for the meeting.
Alright, thank you, uh, Donna?
Well, I know there's a lot of conversation about the abatements, you know, uh. Not everybody's able to cut their yard, I know somebody who cut their yard and I hope that people. Realize they can call the town office, because I do have a couple people that volunteered, but also uh. I don't know what those ones are.
I mean, so if if there is a property that needs abated that's been identified by the abatement committee. And you guys elect to do a phone call or or you know if there's somebody that needs help, um, I mean, is it? Is it okay if we, I mean, somebody mentioned that Dan and Shelley would do it? I mean, is that something that we should look at doing or?
So I think that that morning thing that we had before went. Because we had a, we had some funds for mowing, didn't they?
That was the um, Hermosa connects had that and to my knowledge, it's.
Yeah, they don't have it.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll talk to them at the next meeting, okay, alright.
If I, if you would be willing to call Dan and Shelley. Uh, when when there's a person, or, you know, rather than giving whoever is their number. You you should handle that so that you're not giving out their number to just everybody, you know, so.
I would just tell the people that, cause the house.
Yep.
Okay, very good, I like that, um, so uh, Shannon was not here and I just would like to mention too, I did try calling her twice before the meeting. And so she did not answer, um, so, Erin?
You you did, alright, we got on next, next week. Yeah, quite a few things on next week, we're gonna do this for reading those. Yeah, fair is gonna be fun, lots going on.
Alright, very good.
Oh, and we have a rattlesnake with some passer here, so that's cool.
Yeah, is he, is he officially licensed?
I don't know if the, if the, you got it done with the rest of it, but.
What's delivering?
We have. They tag them, I guess, an electronic tag, license them.
Oh, really?
Yeah, yeah. It goes in them.
Really?
Yeah, just like they do with dogs and stuff.
Like, for like a chip.
Yeah, yeah. She's big thing.
Tell me about this snake.
Eric caught a snake up at a campground, you didn't hear about that?
No.
Oh, yeah, he caught, he went up and saved this campground from this terror that was living underneath one of the buildings, six foot long rattler. Like that long, and so we got it, so we get it to rep, well, he was gonna take it to Reptile Gardens, get it licensed and tagged and.
He was digging in home.
Yeah, yeah, it's, yeah.
Okay, so uh. Good meeting, everybody, I don't need to speak anymore than I already did tonight and so I'll just uh. Well, the adjournment of this work session, thanks everyone for coming.